I'd order the workshop of April 7th, 2020. Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Williams?
Here.
Councilmember Vamato?
Here.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Here.
Councilmember Nichols?
Here.
Councilmember at large, Van den Boer?
Here. Please stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll skip the certification of prior meetings, read a privilege of four and same. So communicate including disapproval messages, Mayor.
Hold on, hold on. Okay.
Okay, basically nothing. I just wanted to announce that any hall going to be closed right after this meeting to the public until further notice due to the COVID-19. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Got it. Good job.
Okay, now we'll move on to communications of public and petitions. Number one.
Number one is a loudspeaker application from Douglas Jeffrey on behalf of the Northern Chautauqua Constellation Club to have live band and use loudspeakers in the radio May 20th through October 1st, 2020 until 1:00 a.m.
Any discussion, counsel?
Second.
By Stoyl, second by Williams. Okay.
Number two, loudspeaker application from Barb Haug on behalf of Christ Chapel Wesleyan Church to use a portable fender amplifier at the Brooks Pavilion at Point Grashit on August 23rd, 2020 from 10:30 a.m. until 12:30 p.m.
Any discussion, counsel? Need a motion to refer to appropriate departments as well as approved subject to proper insurance as usual conditions?
So move.
By Williams? By Amano? Okay, three.
Number three, loudspeaker application from Lilian Devine on behalf of the Juneteenth celebration to use loudspeakers, microphones, instruments, and a band at Memorial Park on June 13th and 14th, 2020 from 12:00 p.m. until 8:00 p.m.
Hey, discussion, counsel?
Yeah, turn this over to the proper department with the understanding if we're even open to children.
Okay, okay. Councilman Amano?
Second.
Okay, moving on.
Number four, request from the Addams for the City of Dunkirk to temporarily take ownership of the Addams while they prepare a new nonprofit 501(c)(3) and letter of support from the City of Dunkirk Director of Development, Rebecca Worst.
Richard, are we receiving and filing this? Or else are we gonna poll this?
This is just a receive and file at this point.
Okay, you said receive and file. So we're receive and file this?
Do we know how long we would take over to the temporary ownership for Richard?
We're not, we're not doing anything at this time. Because there's some complications, some complications, the taxes they have affect not only the city, but the school board and the county. So further discussion after we end those other discussions before we can entertain the request.
Okay, so basically I think what I gathered from our city attorney is that we're just gonna receive and file this. We're not gonna act on any of this until we get further information on it.
But it won't hamper their non-for-profit filing.
We'll take care of that, but tonight we're just gonna receive and file it. We're not gonna act on it. Nothing. Correct, Richard?
Yes, sir. Correct.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, like I said, this is, this is a new experience for everybody, so we're trying to get the, get the bugs out so we can get this working properly. Number six?
Number five?
Oh, I'm sorry. Number five?
Article 78 petition seeking declaratory judgment on charter provisions.
Another thing that we're gonna receive and file. Correct, Richard?
It's correct.
Okay, so this is number five will be received and filed. Moving on to number six?
Number six, notice of claim from Jonathan Cox for damages caused when the water backed up into his basement allegedly due to the sewer line on Central Avenue being blocked on March 9, 2020 at approximately 6:00 a.m.
Any discussion, counsel? Need a motion to refer to appropriate departments as well as approved subject to appropriate insurance as usual conditions? By, first by Nichols? Second by Williams? Okay, number seven?
Number seven, prior written notice from Tommy Roke on a hazardous tree dropping branches over cars along the street and leaving, and leaning towards his house and garage on the side of 53 West Forest Street and the left side of 49 West Forest Street.
Any discussion, counsel? I, I did talk to Tommy about this situation and I was gonna just refer this to the city attorney and to our Department of Public Works Director, Randy Woodbury. Randy, if you're on there, do you know anything about this enough? Okay, moving on. I need a first? Williams, second?
Nichols.
Nichols. Hey, report sustaining committees, boards, and commissions. Uh, Councilman Williams?
No, nothing for the workshop.
Councilman Amano?
Is Randy available?
It says that he is, but he wasn't answering when we did it unless they didn't unmute his mic or something. Hold on.
Okay, Councilman Stoyl?
Yeah, I want to thank the, the department. I've had numerous, numerous complaints on parking and I believe that that part of the place, it'll be easier this, not this time of year because they're only calling and screaming about once a week. So, uh, as we come at that parking, we can't connect the entire place, we're on the screen. That's why it stopped coming out. We're working on it. Hopefully we'll get dinner straight now.
All right, thank you. Anything else? Judge?
Not for here.
Okay, I do have a couple things. Um, I was gonna ask Randy, but Mayor, maybe you would kind of fill us in on this, this, uh, on the Lucas Avenue for the brush drop off. Are we just, are we using that as a Saturday? I know that was a trial on last Saturday. Is it open to the city residents during the week or is it just gonna stay on Saturday?
It's supposed to be open during the week. Uh, we did it for this Saturday because we were behind on it, but, uh, it's supposed to be open during the week as well.
Um, and the other thing?
I'm not hearing if anybody's talking.
On that.
Absolutely. We have made a similar rest on it. You talked about it a lot ago. The warmer weather coming, I'm sure it's probably going to increase. Um, I will remind our patrols and put a memo out and we will address it as best we can.
Okay, thank you. Like I said, it's a pet peeve of mine and I'm gonna continue. I'm here for two years and I'm not gonna stop asking and hopefully I talk to the city court judge, John Coosdale, and we are gonna come down hard on the loud mufflers and the loud music and.
As well, councilman, I will put a, uh, media release out on it as well, just telling people that we are going to have very strict enforcement. It's a pet peeve of mine too, so I'm on the same line.
Exactly, I think we all are.
I don't care for it either. It annoys the heck out of me. So, um, I will get on it and I will put a media release out and my next radio show I will talk about it.
I mean, I love music as much as anyone else, but I don't need to hear it 10 blocks before it gets to the house, you know?
I absolutely agree.
Dave, why don't you brought that up? We just got this received 600 block Park Avenue. Lot of problems for the person on the 600 block of water. They're ready to put their house up with sale. Cousin was going on a, a 600 block problem. Music, it's the cars and it's the music, especially what you just said, what you want to perform. Let's take a look at it.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Okay, we're moving on to unfinished business.
Number 33, resolution for removal of Dunkirk City Charter Section 4.02 subsections M and N.
Any discussion, counsel? Uh, we're gonna leave this on the table. It's gonna die on the table tonight. Number 44? Was polled, right? Correct?
44, amended resolution for intro number one to local law number 1, 2020. City of Dunkirk, a local law to amend city charter. We introduce a point of office remover, move global, sorry, chapter four, section 4.02n.
So that is polled, so it's gonna remain on the table. So we'll move on to 45.
Number 45, amended resolution for intro number two to local law number 2-2020. City of Dunkirk, a local law to amend appendix one of the city charter rules of order of the common council, section six, resolutions.
Okay, so I need a motion to take this off the table. By Nichols, second by? I'm sorry, what was that?
When we, when we get to the meeting, I'll second you.
Okay. So you just want me to go through these without? Getting the sponsor?
Um, the ones that, the ones that are on the table, we need somebody to, to have somebody to take them off.
Right. I can do that during the workshop, correct?
Yeah, you can do that, but we just can't take them off the table where we need them.
Yeah, okay. Okay, now going to number 46?
Number 46, also called amended resolution for intro number three to local law number 3-2020. City of Dunkirk, a local law to amend Dunkirk City Charter, section three, mayoral powers and duties.
And we're also gonna pull that. We're gonna pull that and let that die on the table. So, moving on.
Number 49, resolution for intro number four to local law number 4-2020. City of Dunkirk, a local law to amend chapter 25, dog, section 25-6, echo penalties for offenses.
Okay, we'll do this now. I need a motion.
I make motion. Nichols?
Yep. Second and by Stoyl's. Okay. Okay, moving on to prefiled resolutions?
Number 50, resolution authorizing adopt the garden program.
Any discussion, counsel? Seeing none, moving on.
Number 51, resolution for ratification of E authorization to execute general indemnity agreement with the Hartford for purchase and sale of streetlights assets from National Grid as part of Dunkirk LED conversion project with LED Energy USA.
Any discussion, counsel? Okay, moving on. 52?
Number 52, resolution setting price and policy for vendors for city festivals.
Any discussion, counsel? 53?
Number 53, resolution rescinding council resolution number 96-2017, creation of human resources director position.
Any discussion, counsel? 54?
Number 54, resolution for intro number five to local law number 5-2020. City of Dunkirk, a local law to amend city charter and code abolish HR director from articles two, section 2.03, articles 15, section 15 of city charter and charter two, articles two and 15 of city code.
Any discussion, counsel? Moving on, 55?
Resolution authorizing budget line modifications for fiscal year 2020.
Any discussion, counsel? Moving on.
Number 56, resolution accepting contract bid for Lake Shore Boardwalk, I'm sorry, Boulevard seawall repairs.
Yeah, Richard, I'll actually, uh, just with the new amended version, just to comment on in the regular meeting if that's all right?
Not a problem.
Okay, thanks. Moving on, 57?
57, resolution authorizing revitalize Dunkirk to plant trees around the city.
Any discussion, counsel? Moving on.
Number 58, resolution for the authorization of one month man forgiveness for boardwalk lessees in the wake of the novel coronavirus business shutdown.
Any discussion, counsel? Seeing none, new business, got any new business? Seeing none, I need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
By Councilman Stoyl, second by Councilman Williams. Clerk Colerole?
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Vamato?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Van den Boer?
Aye. Workshop's over with. We'll start the public hearing. All right, I'd like to call this public hearing to order. Clerk Colerole?
Councilmember Williams?
Aye, we're here.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Here.
Councilmember Nichols?
Here.
Councilmember at large, Van den Boer?
Here. Uh, the first public notice out of, of the two tonight would be the intro to number four, local law number four dash 2020, City of Dunkirk, local law to amend chapter 25, dogs 25 dash six, E penalties for offenses. Please take further notice that the public hearing will be held on the resolution 49 dash 2020 on Tuesday, April 7th, 2020 at 5:27 p.m. in the common council chambers. They're here, all interested persons. Um, unfortunately, we did, uh, we can't have everybody in city hall, but we did have some emails.
I have one for this, uh, local law number two.
Okay.
Local law number two, comment. Uh, Dunkirk Common Council, the Dunkirk Citizens Advisory Committee would like to express concern over the holding of public comments during this health. The process being utilized is limited, limiting the voices of the citizens of the City of Dunkirk. Not all citizens have email. Citizens should be staying at home and not traveling around the city. And with the meeting being close to the public, limits the ability of our citizens to participate in democracy. All public hearings should be deferred until the public health emergency is abated. The CAC also recommends that rather than performing piecemeal alterations, the common council can panel a charter revision commission. The last full charter revision was completed in 1977 and has undergone several changes since then. By empowering a charter commission from a representative cross-section of our city will be us a charter that is fair to all members of our community and will take transitory politics out of the equation. Proposed local law number two changes the number of council members required to sponsor a resolution. The common council is unbalanced to the point where a second sponsor cannot be found. This will have the effect of silencing the minority. A small community that is trying to improve itself can ill afford to marginalize significant segments of our community. A phrase being used during these times is, we are all in this together. The common council and the city need to take this phrase to heart. We city residents are all in this together. Refrain from passing the law and instead create a charter commission. Paul Sommerfeld, Chairman, Dunkirk Citizens Advisory Committee.
Anything else on this, Edwin?
Not for number two, sir.
Okay, any discussion, counsel?
Yeah, just could you explain what that is so that the general public would know what that's?
It's a local law to amend chapter 25, dog section penalties for offenses. Whereas the City of Dunkirk is in the process of constructing a new dog shelter to house impounded dogs. And whereas until the shelter construction is complete, the impounded dogs must be housed in private facility. And whereas the cost of the housing impounded dogs have increased to $25 per dog, per day. And whereas the current charge of the owner's impounded dog does not cover the full amount of their care. Now therefore be it enacted that the city council, the City of Dunkirk, New York, is followed, section one. It is the intent of the local law to amend chapter 25, section 6E to reflect that the increase in the price of housing impounded dog. Uh, section two amended of city charter, chapter 25, section 6E of the Dunkirk City Code is hereby amended as followed.
And from what I understand, we have to have a second location just in case something happens at our, uh, the new one that will be there. According to.
Correct. Yeah, Denise.
Right.
And Officer Zatz is in charge, the ACO, so she's doing a fantastic job. So, um, yep. She guides us and refers to, uh, a lot of things that are very, very helpful in that situation. So. Any other questions, counsel? Okay, public hearing number four, local law for 2020, City Dunkirk is closed. So the second one would be the local law to amend appendix one of city charter rules of order of the common council section four resolutions. Please take further notice that public hearing will be held on the resolution 45, 2020 on Tuesday, April 7th, 2020 at 5:32 p.m. in the common council chambers. They're here, any, uh, interested persons. So, uh, this is to, um, rules of order of the common council section. Do you have anything for that, Edwin?
That was the one I read earlier, sir. I apologize.
Okay. Okay, so I'll read this one also. Um, whereas the City of Dunkirk delineates operational rules of common council via appendix to the city charter, appendix number one, until rules of order of common council. And whereas section of said rules deals with how the council and law department of the city clerk's office handle resolutions. And then whereas section presents the rules for dealing with the prefiled resolutions, whereas the council believes it is necessary to clarify the process to avoid council members being surprised by being named on sponsors of resolutions. And to improve the communication between the departments, resolutions, drafters and council now therefore be it enacted by the city of council of the City of Dunkirk, New York, as follows. Regarding prefiled resolutions, we're gonna delete. Each resolution except oral resolutions must be filed with a city clerk no later than 5:00 p.m. on Thursday proceedings, regular setting, I'm sorry, scheduled meetings. Action upon prefiled resolution shall not require a second. And we're gonna add six dash two regarding prefiled resolutions. Each resolution except oral resolutions must be filed by a city clerk no later than 5:00 p.m. on Thursday proceeding, regular scheduled meetings. Prefiled resolutions must have a minimum of two council sponsors prior resolution filings. Action upon prefiled resolution shall not require a second. The local law should take effect immediately upon filing with the Secretary of State after necessary public hearing to be held at a rec, at the next regular scheduled common council meeting. And thereafter, the majority vote of the favor of common councils after said public hearings. So do we have anything on that?
No, sir.
Okay. Any discussion, counsel? Anybody? Okay, seeing none. This public hearing is closed also. That's it for the public hearings. Clerk Colerole?
Councilmember Williams? Councilmember Vamato?
Am I, I are here?
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Yeah, I'm gonna start again.
I don't know what we're calling the roll for.
Just to close the public hearings.
Oh, motion to adjourn?
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Vamato?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Van den Boer?
Aye.
Regular meeting of April 7th, 2020. Clerk Colerole?
Councilmember Williams?
Here.
Councilmember Vamato?
Here.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Here.
Councilmember Nichols?
Here.
Councilmember at large, Van den Boer?
Aye, here. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Judge, stand up.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, start off with the, uh, um, certification of prior meetings.
This was certified at an official copy of the minutes of the common council meeting of Tuesday, March 3rd, 2020, was presented to the mayor on Tuesday, March 10th, 2020. Pursuant to section 3.03 of the Dunkirk City Charter, all items presented to the mayor are now in full force and effect and witness where I appear to set my hand and the seal of the City of Dunkirk, New York, the 7th day of April, 2020.
Need a motion dispensing the reading of the minutes?
Nichols.
By Councilwoman Nichols, second by Councilman Williams. Clerk Colerole?
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Vamato?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Van den Boer?
Aye.
Reading of the privilege of the floor regulations? Since we're not gonna have that tonight.
Can I read the privilege of the floor letters that we have?
You can.
Resolution to abolish the HR position 53, 2020 to be read at privilege of the floor. Ned Devine, 618 Main Street, Dunkirk, New York, 1404a. I'm speaking against a resolution abolishing the HR director position. It seems to me that the council is actively working to hamstring the mayor and what could turn out to be a major cause to the taxpayers of the City of Dunkirk. Please stop letting your emotions and your animosity towards the mayor control your votes. They're getting in the way of a smooth running city. The city is four years, for four years has moved forward and now is most of the citizens, us citizens appear to be stifled. The HR director was responsible for getting the city workers up to date on required training. Failing to keep up to date on mandated training can have serious financial repercussions. If the lack of up-to-date training was the cause of an incident, financial repercussions would probably occur. It is similar to the result if someone slips and falls on the sidewalk, having not kept your sidewalk in good condition. The same lawyers that advertise that fact on TV are the same lawyers who would rub their hands together and make someone whole after neglect suit. Other areas this impact are labor negotiations and grievances. All I hear is that the city is not running as smoothly as before. I asked the mayor if he would agree with this assessment. It seems to us on the outside that while the two in the personnel office are working as hard as they can, are now drowning in work with little hope of catching up. This resolution is short-sighted, spiteful, hurting, uh, overworked staff, and yet another roadblock to the mayor, who I remind you was elected by a majority to move our great city forward.
Yeah, I'd just like to comment that with Ned Devine, um, we do have a personnel director down in the, down in that office and we do have a secretary. For us to hire another director, uh, human resource director would be comparable to hiring another police chief, hiring another fire chief for $60,000 in benefits. It doesn't make any sense. If they need help, the council's all on board of giving a part-time person, they go down and help them out. I'm sick of hearing that we're taking the person away from that position. We're not. There's a personnel director down there. Whether you wanna call him HR or call him personnel director, he's down there, he's working, he's doing a great job. If you need help, the council, we already discussed this and we will give you help. We're not trying to take the city backwards. We're trying to save money and save the taxpayers' money for foolish operations that are going on here. Thank you. Anyone else?
We made an offer. We had an offer of a part-time sharing the cost, Mr. Devine. Sharing the cost with the city school district. Uh, we had meeting with them. They were nice enough to show up here. They did make an attempt to meet with the mayor, I believe, and his answer was, I'm not at all interested. Goodbye.
Mr. Chairman, if I could respond?
Anybody else?
Yeah, I just have, I mean, in his letter.
Hello?
He's got a lot of statements in here. How does he know that the city's not running smoothly? Who's giving him all this information? These, these people are so overworked and stockpiled with everything. And I'm so sick and tired. He's gotta get over it. The election was five months. five months ago. We don't need to know. We know who was elected mayor. We know how it happened. Just let it go. Stop writing about it, talking about it. Move on in the city.
Mr. Chairman, hello?
Sorry.
This is Mayor Rosso. Can I speak, please?
And I, and I agree with Judge and Paul. We did reach out for a human resource, and it was a workable situation.
May, uh, Mr. Chairman, this is.
Anybody else?
Hello?
Go ahead.
Hello? Mr. Chairman, this is Mayor Rosso.
What's that?
Hello?
Go ahead, mayor.
Can you hear me?
Go ahead, mayor.
How we can?
Okay, so, uh, I respectfully disagree with the council on this issue. The human resource director position is a very vital position to city government. The gentleman that we have currently as a personnel administrator does an excellent job with the personnel administrator duties. However, he is not qualified to be a human resource director. So I stand very firm on my position regarding the issue of human resource director. It is a position that's needed in city government, and not to bring it in is going to cost city taxpayers much more funds than sixty thousand dollars. Must I remind you that the gentleman we had in there was doing an excellent job for thirty thousand dollars before you terminated him without cause?
Well, we stand firm on our decision also, mayor. So, and, um, we are trying to deal with this, but, uh, the communications, um, we really can't speak too much on this right now because you, you filed a lawsuit against the council in the city of Dunkirk, which the taxpayers are going to have to pay for now. So this is a reason why thirty-three resolution was put on the table, and it's not through our legal counsel that we cannot comment on this anymore. So moving on.
Okay.
Go ahead, Marty.
Um, I think we should have a full-time, uh, resource director, human resources, or whatever you want to call it. Just at a little place where I work, which is E C R, where we have fifty-eight union employees, a few, uh, salaried employees, which is all under one H R person with, uh, and I've been there twenty-six years. When I first came in there, the first few years, there wasn't any of these things that we have to get trained on, nothing. Then within the last five to ten years, those things start coming in where you have to take all these trainings, which when we got them here, and, uh, in twenty sixteen, figuring that all these things were happening here in the city, which we found out we were out of compliance. These things weren't going on. And, uh, Roger does a great job, but he can't do all of that. And some of that stuff, I don't even think he's up to speed on how to do that. That's where you got to have a qualified H R person. If we had a qualified H R person, we can, we're going to be out of, out of compliance with some stuff. We could get sued, and if any good lawyer is sitting out there knowing that we're not doing this, they're going to be rubbing their hands together and coming after the city. Um, and if we did have somebody in there, maybe we could reach back to the school district down the road and get together with them again and try to, both of us get together. They need one also, so if we can combine that, and I thought that was a great idea when we went to that first meeting at the school with them, and then they came here and spoke here, we should revisit that down the road also, together.
I just want to say before anybody else really gets too involved in this, we are still at the privilege of the floor section. We will have time to debate that when that resolution comes up, and I think it'd be right to wait for the, you know, to best serve the public to go on because I know there's a couple other, uh, things for privilege of the floor. So I know it's a heated thing, and we're going to talk about it and probably get in good debate over the resolution when it comes up, but at this time, it still is privilege of the floor.
Moving on to privilege of the floor, anything else, Edmund?
Yes, sir. Uh, agenda prefile resolutions fifty and fifty-seven, April seventh, twenty twenty, council meeting. Stephen Reeves. Council members, number one, in consideration of continued efforts to beautify and enhance several areas in the city of Dunkirk, Revitalized Dunkirk Incorporated strongly encourages the passage of prefile resolution fifty to continue authorize, authorization of the adopted garden program that has been developed through the cooperation of the Department of Public Works. This will be a second consecutive year of the program, and Revitalized Dunkirk has been working closely with Randy Woodbury and Andy Bone to organize the twenty twenty activity. Number two, Revitalized Dunkirk Incorporated has been working closely with Jill Mo of the Office of Development in preparing the, to provide the city with several trees to be planted as part of the city's tree management plan. Revitalized Dunkirk strongly urges council to pass prefile resolution fifty-seven authorizing this activity. Number three, city attorney has been informed that the insurance carrier for Revitalized Dunkirk will be provided, a, providing a certificate of insurance to both him and the city clerk in advance of any starting of this proposed activities. Thank you for your attention to these matters. Stephen A. Reeves, treasure, Revitalized Dunkirk.
Excellent, thank you. Anything else?
There was one less communication. Um, this is from public comment, Ryan Gabalski. Uh, hello, council members. Hope everyone is well, and your families are safe. I wanted to submit a comment to support of the council. Thank you for following through on what you campaigned on. As evidence in your large margin of victory in November, residents of the city are behind you. Keep up the good work. Thank you. Keep safe. Brian Gabalski, Sixth Grashit Court.
There was a couple other that were submitted, but they didn't have their address on it, their name, and, uh, they were sent in too late, and also, uh, didn't, one didn't have anything to do with the resolutions that we're talking about tonight. So, moving on. Uh, communications from the mayor, including disapproval messages?
Disapproval messages. I just want to inform the public that, uh, city hall will be closed to the public, uh, effective close of business after this meeting this evening. Uh, there's going to be a press release to, to, uh, explain how people could still make payments and still come to city hall if they need to. Um, but I just wanted to let you know that this decision was made based on, uh, the conditions we're in with COVID nineteen. Again, this decision is to protect our city residents as well as our city staff, and I would like to commend our city staff for their efforts in dealing with this situation that we're in. I've had plenty of staff that were sent to work from home as per the executive order of the governor, and plenty of them have come back to tell me that they're willing to come in to work. Uh, I'm very grateful to have a staff that, that wants to come in and help our community, and also want to thank our residents for their patience and understanding as we deal with this crisis. Thank you. That's all I have.
Is that it, mayor?
Yes, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Communications, uh, from public and petitions. Number one.
Number one, loudspeaker application from Douglas Chapley on behalf of the Northern Shatap Conservation Club to have live bands and use loudspeakers and radio May twentieth through October first, twenty twenty until one A M.
Need a motion to refer to appropriate departments as well as approved subject to appropriate insurances and usual conditions.
I saw move.
By Stoy. Second, by Williams.
Again, Paul, what that is, I see it's from May twentieth event. That's if we're up and running. We'll let the chief decide that.
Okay. Clerk call the roll.
Council member Williams.
Aye.
Council member Bamantho.
Aye.
Council member Stoy.
Aye.
Council member Nichols.
Aye.
Council member at large Vandenbuur.
Aye. Number two.
Number two, loudspeaker application from Barb Hauck on behalf of Christ Chapel Wesleyan Church to use a portable fender amplifier at the Brooks Pavilion at Point Grashit on August twenty-third, twenty twenty from ten thirty A M. Until twelve thirty P M.
Again, I need a motion to refer to appropriate insurances and usual conditions. So move by Williams. Second, by Pamantho. Clerk call the roll.
Council member Williams.
Aye.
Council member Bamantho.
Aye.
Council member Stoy.
Aye.
Council member Nichols.
Aye.
Council member at large Vandenbuur.
Aye. Number three.
Number three, loudspeaker application from Lily and Devine on behalf of the Juneteenth celebration to use loudspeakers, microphones, instruments, and a band at Memorial Park on June thirteenth and fourteenth, twenty twenty from twelve P M. Until eight P M.
Need a motion to refer to appropriate insurances and usual conditions.
Again.
By Stoy. Second, by.
Again, population. I see it's June, June thirteenth. It's, we're up and running.
With the coronavirus being over.
Everybody knows right now.
Okay. Clerk call the roll.
Council member Williams.
Aye.
Council member Bamantho.
Aye.
Council member Stoy.
Aye.
Council member Nichols.
Aye.
Council member at large Vandenbuur.
Aye. Carry. Number four.
Number four, it's a request from the Adams for the city of Dunkirk to temporarily take ownership of the Adams while they prepare a new nonprofit five oh one C three and letter of support from the city of Dunkirk director of development, Rebecca Worster.
I receive and file that. Number five.
Number five, Article seventy-eight petition seeking declaratory judgment on charter revisions, provisions.
Any discussion, counsel?
Received and filed, right.
Received and filed. Number six.
Number six, notice of claim from Jonathan Cox for damages caused when the water backed up into his basement allegedly due to the sewer line on Central Avenue being blocked on March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty at approximately six A M.
Need a motion to refer this to the law department and Department of Public Works.
Nichols.
By councilwoman Nichols. Second, by Williams. Clerk call the roll.
Council member Williams.
Aye.
Council member Bamantho.
Aye.
Council member Stoy.
Aye.
Council member Nichols.
Aye.
Council member at large Vandenbuur.
Aye.
Number seven, prior written notice from Tommy Roke of hazardous tree dropping branches over cars along the street and leaning towards his house and garage on the side of fifty-three West Fourth Street and the left side of forty-nine West Fourth Street.
Need a motion to refer this to law department and Department of Public Works director. So move by Williams. Second, by councilwoman Nichols. Clerk call the roll.
Council member Williams.
Aye.
Council member Bamantho.
Aye.
Council member Stoy.
Aye.
Council member Nichols.
Aye.
Council member at large Vandenbuur.
Aye. Carry.
Number seven, report, I'm, I'm sorry.
Right. Number seven, reports of standing committees, boards, and commissions. Councilman Williams.
Hi, I, um, first of all, I guess I'd like to, to tell everybody that's watching, those that are taking part in the meeting and us here, that, uh, one, I see that we have everything, um, taped out so that we're proper distance apart. Um, with the feedback that comes off there, I'm assuming that if we do another meeting, that we're probably going to be needing to do it all from Zoom. Um, the, the feedback, or we figure out a different way to do that, but especially with city hall being closed, I'm thinking that, uh, future meetings will have to all be Zoom. Um, I noticed from the comments that were put in by the citizens advisory committee, um, this is a state of the emergency through New York State, city of Dunkirk, Chalkwood County, uh, pretty much the whole world, and, um, there still needs to be certain business that needs to be conducted. And, uh, we are trying to get, uh, public input through email, through people dropping it off. There's now currently drop backs off at city hall that I was here this afternoon and, and saw, uh, uh, putting it up on the walls as you walk through the doors of city hall. So, city business, city government still needs to run. And part of city business and city government needing to run is we need to do a few different things and have these council meetings to, to move forward. So, um, I respect a lot that's in there and respect that, but I, I just have to say, we have to, to move forward, and, uh, we did check into a lot of different things legally, not legally, looking at the, uh, governor's executive order, and we made an attempt to have the public, uh, participate in the meeting through email or through dropping stuff off at city hall. Um, in this time, being a state of emergency, this is not going to be the standard way that we do meetings forever. This will be the standard way, or a Zoom meeting will be the standard way that we're going to conduct meetings until the social distancing things and the, the executive orders are lifted. So, I mean, we're open to advice, but to just halt meetings, I disagree with that idea. And, um, that's it for, for that issue part of it. Um, a little bit ago, we, uh, we received and filed a lawsuit, and I, I had an email from one of the first world taxpayers that contacted me by phone, and I was driving at the time when she called, so I asked if she could just email it to me so I could get it right of what, what she wanted to say by it. And she says, I feel it's important for the citizens in the city, the people that pay the taxes know that the cost incurred by this action of the mayor, attorney, and campola versus the city will be paid by the city for both parties. I thought the deal was made that if attorney was to work for city and its behalf, he would stay in present position, but if he was working for mayor, then he was to be relieved of his position. Sounds like a deal was broken and that it will be a financial burden on the city taxpayers. On top of it, attorney is paid a hefty salary, benefits, et cetera, and now is running for political office in the county. Are we to spend this money for a person who is considering leaving anyways? Um, so that, that was one question. Um, another question, and somebody can comment in a little bit. I got her on the mute thing, and I can't read the paper and look and see who wants to comment at the same time. Um, another thing would be for, uh, the other question she had was for the walking track around the Little League fields. They're in extremely poor condition and a safety hazard to anyone. Uh, is this going to be fixed as part of the grant? And are there going to be also part of the grant, are there going to be roofs on the pavilions that are down in Wright Park, kind of like the roofs were replaced in Wright Park? Uh, I guess that part would be for, for Randy, and I'll unmute now, and then I had one more question after that.
Hello?
Yeah, Randy, please.
Yeah, the, uh, that is part of the grant that we just received for Wright Park Phase Two improvements. Uh, we definitely will improve the walking path and fix all of that. It's, uh, well-used, and, uh, roofs will match. Uh, all that we've done at Point Grashit, and we also will fix, uh, a Cedar Street connection to Wright Park as well. So it's part of the plan that we just received the grant, the grant for.
Okay, thank you. And, and then my last question for Randy, uh, would be that, uh, we just re, also received a little bit ago, a prior written notice for a tree. I know that I submitted, uh, a list of several trees for prior written notice. Are we working on taking down those trees and checking them out so that they are no longer a hazard?
Definitely. Mr. Propilia and his excellent crew are on your list, uh, and, and chopping away on them, so to speak, and, uh, we will get all of them done. And we thank Mr. Roke for calling this other one to our attention, and I have full confidence that, uh, Mr. Propilia and the excellent street department crew, uh, will get these done well and get them done soon.
Randy, one more thing that came to mind before I say I'm part of, done with my part of it. Um, that, uh, that cutout on Central Avenue that the, um, that the contractor did, and looks like maybe winter mixes put into there. It's quite a bit of a bump there. Can, can we get them or somebody to get over there and smooth that out some, uh, between Albany Avenue and Willowbrook Avenue?
Absolutely. I will have the plumbing inspector get on the, uh, road cut permit for the plumber that did that and dress it up immediately and do a final fix when the blacktop plant opens up. Thank you for, I totally agree.
Thank you. I'm done with mine, and, uh, if anybody wanted to comment on the other section of it that I, that I read from the, the first world taxpayer that contacted me earlier, otherwise, uh, I'm done with my section.
Councilman Pamantho?
Yes, Doug, you just answered, got one of my answered questions. Residents were calling, complaining about us, that Central Avenue by Willowbrook, that part there. So thank you, Randy, getting on that. Uh, I agree with Councilman Williams about going to Zoom the next time we have a meeting, even when that's going to be. I think that's a great idea. Keep everybody safe. Um, as a reminder to everybody, um, please be safe. Do the distance, do your due diligence, stay home. If you got to go to the grocery store, go with one person. Keep everybody home. It's not a playground at Walmart, which I've seen, and I see they make some steps to do, uh, some different things, single in, single out, and all the other stores. As soon as we do this, the shorter the time period will be if we all just do our due diligence. No basketball playing and, uh, nothing like that. You can go to the, you can go to the high school and walk around the track. I see people doing that. I see people playing catch. That, that's fine. There's a good distance there, unless I'm throwing to him, which I couldn't get any further away. I couldn't, you know, I'd catch it.
You got it.
And, uh, have a happy Easter, and everybody, please be safe. That's it.
Thank you, Councilman Pamantho.
What's your, uh?
Councilman Stoy?
Favorite street. Should we mention it, Mr. M?
Judge, you got anything to say? Judge?
Your award.
Yeah. Councilman Stoy?
No, I just, I said it in the, uh, workshop, I'm, I thank Dave and his department. Uh, as you know, Paul, we've been. Uh, as you know, Paul, we've been getting calls and calls and calls and, uh, once we take care of one situation, then for some reason or another, another situation pops up conveniently. We can't dedicate the entire police department to one street. We, we've got a lot of stuff going on in the city that a lot of people don't realize. Uh, Dave and his department are doing what they can and as soon as they can get to it, it should be easier now because parking is one week at a time. Thanks.
Yes, I have a concern on the, um, I think it was the February meeting, we approved a beach cleanup for April 25th. And I don't know what we want to do on that and how you want to handle that because it's April 25th, I think it was that date, that that group was going to start cleaning up the beach.
Well, hopefully everybody will use common sense. I mean, with everything going on in the city, you know?
I think that may have been the groups from the college and the college is closed.
Yeah, I mean, this, yeah, I think everybody, but that's, that's, that's a great idea.
If we have contact, maybe we should double check and just contact to make sure that we don't have a large group gathering that could be violating.
Great.
Also, I, I had the opportunity of using, or doing the recycling on Saturday in the more, early in the morning. What a wonderful system it was. Um, there was, uh, Mr. Romanek was down there taking plate numbers to ensure that it was a city residents using our, um, recycling facility. The only concern I have is the boxes that people are not breaking down and putting into, they're putting them in the bins and taking a valuable plastic and tin space. And there was a lovely man from Upper Deer Street with a burgundy, uh, pickup truck that helped me remove about 35 boxes from the bins and stack them in the center, which was very nice because there were several elderly people that were coming after I was leaving to get rid of their recyclables. Um, there was another item there. I think Randy might be able to expound on that, but one last thing, I just want to remind everybody, all playgrounds in the City of Dunkirk are closed. I stopped, um, one person from getting out of the car today and I said, "I, please, I just don't want to rain on your parade, but all playgrounds are closed." Uh, the tape that they're using are, it's being ripped down and the, the children are using the playgrounds anyway. So I don't know if Randy wants to expound on what we're going to do with all of the above or any or any of the above.
Sure. Councilwoman, thank you, uh, thank you for being a good ambassador, uh, a good eagle eyes throughout the city. Uh, the playground that you found, uh, on tape was the school playground and we'll pass the word to the school. The school has agreed that they will tape off their playgrounds as well. And I'd like to thank Jason and Billy in the Parks Division who are maintaining the, uh, tape. Uh, we have good signs on there too, but, you know, we would like to ask the people not to remove the tape, but to, it's there for a reason. It's for their safety. But if it happens to come down deliberately or accidentally, we'll put it back up. We'll keep an eye on that. So thank you for reminding us. As to the recycling and brush on Saturday, that was our first trial in, in a cleaner operation and I think it's going to go well. I'd like to reopen that during the week. We found out that we need a sentinel there and Mr. John Romanek did an excellent job under the guidance of Mr. Propilia to make sure we had more than 400 vehicles drop off recycling and brush on Saturday. And John kept everybody, make sure it was City of Dunkirk only material because the city taxpayers pay for this. And it worked out very well and we'll handle the cardboard, uh, with your suggestion as well. And then one more thing about the beach cleanup, I will contact Dr. Jarvis at the college and make sure that if she still has a skeleton crew of students that want to clean the beach, that we do it safely. She may want to postpone that sometime, but she's been doing that for more than a decade and done a wonderful job, but I think she's certainly going to understand the situation we're in now that it may have to be done differently. Thank you.
Just have one last thing for Randy is, is there any way that on Ruggle Street, uh, by the, uh, is it family physicians and the bell towers, if that patch of street could be filled in for the tenants so that they're not stepping in the water on Ruggle Street? Thank you.
Yes, thank you. We, we'll do it with cold patch for now and it'll be one of the first streets we hit with a hot patch.
All right, thank you. Randy, why are you still here? I just have a quick question. Can you confirm what the mayor said, the brush, people can drop the brush off at Lucas Avenue during the day, all weekend, on, on Saturday?
Uh, it will be. We, I, I'd like to check with Mike tomorrow to see if he's ready. We definitely proved that we need somebody there to watch or it gets out of control. And there are no places for, I, I feel sorry for the other communities that don't have a facility like ours, but we just can't handle it. It's a cost, uh, to the city, it's for city, uh, material only. So we need somebody there to watch. If, if, if we have somebody to watch, then we'll open it up during the day. It definitely will be open the same way on Saturday from eight o'clock in the morning till five o'clock in the afternoon. And then certainly next week, it'll be open every single day.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Hello? Mr. Chairman, this is the mayor. I just wanted to again assure the council and the residents that the plan is to be open, uh, every day of the week. And we know that we're going to probably have to bring somebody in, uh, to supervise it, uh, like it was done this past Saturday and that will be the plan. Thank you.
And also John Romanek, he is my next door neighbor and he is, he does a great job. Uh, kudos to him also. Um, while I'm going, giving thanks, I'd like to thank Gabe Taylor. Thank you for getting this together. I mean, I'm sorry that it's, it's kind of crazy tonight, but this is like a couple days' notice and we got everything together, Don, myself, Gabe. And also thank you to Sergeant Dan Manzella for getting us together and trying to get, uh, trying to have this meeting. And, uh, like Don was saying, Williams was saying earlier, that we need to continue our meetings and so don't get bogged down. We need to keep the city going, so, but in a safe manner. So this is what, what, again, Gabe, thank you very much and Sergeant Manzella, Dan Manzella, I appreciate it. Also, um, Chief, I just want to say thank you for, um, getting ahold of the person for the safety dance on, on the, in Washington Park. There was a lot of emails sent over the weekend about it. Uh, Don called, I like to think Don Williams, he jumped right on it, got ahold of the council, got ahold of the mayor, got ahold of you and, um, things are done. You made the phone call. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Um, speaking of common sense, you know, with, with what's going on in the world right now, um, maybe down the road, we can have a safety dance or not know. So also, uh, with the cars, with the music, we, we spoke about that in the workshop. Anyone that's tuning now that, uh, if you just want to comment with the loud music and the little cars driving around with the loud mufflers zipping around, um, like I said, this is one of my pet peeves. I know it's yours and, uh, I'm here for two years, so we're, it's not going to go away.
I agree. Um, as you talked about at the workshop, Councilman, it's a pet peeve of mine. Um, I don't like it either. Uh, we will be strictly enforcing the noise ordinance when it comes to these vehicles. Um, I'll, uh, get the patrols out. I will put a metal out. I will put media release out as well saying that we are going to enforce it and I will, uh, make it a point to discuss it on the next radio show I'm on as well. I'm right on your side with this, Paul. Um, I don't like it either and I promise you we'll do something to do the best we can to fix it.
And I've also talked to your lieutenants and sergeants and, and the patrol guys and they've been great about it. So the police department and the City of Dunkirk have been fantastic about it. And I just want to let everybody know that we're out there doing it the best we kind of is right now with everything going on.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Okay, that's all I have, so we're going to move on to unfinished business? Oh yeah, just one other thing I do have, I was going to mention this, uh, at the end of the meeting, but it was brought to my attention from a couple people, Patty Plaschuski and, uh, Councilwoman Nichols at Evelyn Wallison, after 50-plus years, now the fiscal affairs officer is retired. Um, I would love to see her come here so we can get her something and recognize her in person when we open the chambers back up. Um, but I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. She's, she was here when I was here last time, 20 years ago, and she's done a fantastic job and her family, uh, well-known family in the City of Dunkirk, and she's done a fabulous job for the city taxpayers and the residents. So thank you very much, Evelyn.
And happy belated birthday.
All right, seeing, uh, going into unfinished business, number 33.
Number 33, resolution for removal of Dunkirk City Charter Section 4.02 subsections MNN.
Any discussion counsel? I do have something that I want to say about this and I started off, um, with the privilege of the floor with, uh, Mr. Devine's note, but I'm going to finish it right now. Uh, this is something that, uh, we were going to take off the table, but, uh, at our March 16th or 17th meeting, but since we were served a lawsuit by the mayor, Richard Moroso and Dave Campola, our attorney that we hired as legal counsel, which would be Dan Gard, uh, advised us not to comment and not to pull this off the table or to respond to anything about this. I'd just like to say it's a shame that somebody couldn't wait, the mayor couldn't wait, uh, one meeting so we could pull this off, which I said in the workshop and I promised them that we were going to vote on this. But obviously, uh, he sees it differently, getting rid of a couple people that just cost the city taxpayers too much money and they needed to go. So with that being said, um, now that we're in a lawsuit with the council and the city taxpayers and the city taxpayers are going to have to foot the bill over something that shouldn't have never happened.
Mr. Chairman.
We followed the charter and the city code by a Bible. You cannot ask a council person to do anything more than that. We followed everything we could. It's been in, this language has been in the charter forever, 35 years plus. We went by this, the people that are getting hired, the people that, I just received a, uh, email tonight saying that we're threatening people's jobs, the appointees. The appointees knew this was in the charter when they hired her. They should have been told by the human resource director or the mayor, they should have told whoever was interviewing these people, they should have known this. So it was in there. So we're not threatening anybody. The way I look at it and the council's doing this, if you're, if the council's trying to obviously go into court over this through the city charter is that if the mayor comes in and hires people and they're not doing their job and the council sees that, I think the council should have the right to get rid of that person. I'm not saying this council, but, or, or this mayor, but down the road, they should equal this right. They should not have the power for the mayor if you have a couple deadbeats in here that are costing the city taxpayers money and you're not doing anything about it. I think the council should react to it and terminate them. And that's exactly what we did for the betterment and for the taxpayers of the City of Dunkirk and for the residents. All right?
Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else?
Chairman, I have something I'd like to say, please. Mr. Chairman, uh, um, I'd like to say, I'd like to, uh, our taxpayers and the.
Any non-clerk call the roll? No, we're not calling the roll. We're not doing anything on it.
Not, nothing.
Okay, I'm sorry. We're just going to let it die.
Right.
On the table. Okay, moving on to number 44.
Hello? Hello?
Number 44. Hello? amended resolution for intro number one to local law number one dash 2020, City of Dunkirk, a local law to amend city charter. Reintroduce plaintiff officer removal, chapter four, section 4.02, November 4.
Okay, so this is pulled. Just going, moving on to 45.
Number 45, amended resolution for intro number two to local law number two dash 2020, City of Dunkirk, a local law to amend appendix one of city charter, rules of order of the common council, section six, resolution.
Need a motion to take this off the table.
I make motions.
By Nichols, second. By Williams, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Vamato.
No.
Councilmember Stoyl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember Elijah Vandenberg.
Aye. Uh, Edwin, could you read the resolution 452020, please? The amended, the amended version, yeah?
Ended resolution number 452020, March 3, 2020, by council members Nichols, Stoyl, and Williams. Intro number two to local law number two dash 2020, City of Dunkirk, a local law to amend appendix one of city charter, rules of order of common council, section six, resolution. Whereas the City of Dunkirk delineates operational rules of common council via an appendix of the city charter, appendix number one titled Rules of the Common Council, and whereas section six of set rules deals with how the council and law department and city clerk's office handle resolutions. And whereas section six represents the rules for dealing with prefiled resolutions. And whereas the council has the right to regulate the internal procedures of the common council and through, whereas through this resolution is the common, is the council. Is, excuse me, the council is regulating the internal procedures of the common council. And whereas this council will like to stop the use of a blanket entire council for resolution sponsorship and to improve communication between the departments, resolution drafters, and council. And whereas section 3.03 of the city charter states the mayor shall not have the power to disapprove any resolution regulating the internal procedures of the common council. Now therefore be enacted by the city council of the City of Dunkirk, New York, as follows. Delete. Law six dash two regarding prefiled resolutions, each resolutions except oral resolutions must be filed with the city clerk no later than 5:00 p.m. on the Thursday preceding regular scheduled meetings and upon prefiled resolutions shall not require a second. Add six dash two regarding prefiled resolutions. Each resolution except oral resolutions must be filed with the city clerk's office no later than 5:00 p.m. on the Tuesday preceding regular scheduled meetings. Prefiled resolutions must have minimum of two council sponsors prior to resolution filing. Action upon prefiled resolutions shall not require a second. Effective date, this local law shall take immediate, so take effect immediately upon filing with the city, I'm sorry, Secretary of State after the necessary public hearing is held at the next regular scheduled common council meeting and after a majority vote in favor of the common, by the common council after set hearings.
Thank you, Edwin. Need a motion to amend resolution? So moved. By Williams.
Nichols.
Second by Council, Councilwoman, uh, Nichols. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Vamato.
No.
Councilmember Stoyl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember Elijah Vandenberg.
Aye.
Any discussion?
For, uh, we, on the amended resolution?
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely. Um, I just want to say that, uh, some of the things that we got referring to this, this resolution, number 452020, um, there is no, no intent to eliminate anybody from doing anything. Uh, some people seem to think that if you need two resolutions, that something can't be brought to this nice public floor that we call the city council meeting. And, um, I definitely disagree with that. Um, if, if a, for any reason, and I can't think of a reason in my head, uh, except for a couple, like if we were going to, if a council member wanted to try to, you know, reinstate two people that we got rid of, then, then they probably want to get a, a second on that one. But they could definitely bring up that topic at a meeting and say, hey, this is what I'm trying to do. I need people to come to a public hearing, or not a public hearing, a, a public meeting and speak up at, at the privilege of the floor section because I need your support to get a second for a, a resolution. Other than that, I don't see any, any reason at all that in the process of moving this city forward, that we would be not wanting to listen to anybody and second a resolution. Um, I for one, when I seek out a resolution to, to put something out there with some of my beliefs in it, I try to get three people to, to co-sponsor it with me and I've done that in the past. And the, the more we need three votes to pass a resolution, so I would try to get everybody that can sponsor a resolution, resolution to sponsor the resolution. And a lot of where this stems from, and I'm glad that it was right here, was, you know, the, the, either, either the, wherever it stems from, if it's the, uh, if it's the law department or if it's the clerk's office. or if it's the clerk's office, I believe it's the law department though, that just willy-nilly puts entire council on it. There's a resolution that, that we let die on the table today, that four council members did not want to even have anything to do with, but it says entire council. So, somebody against my will put entire council on there because I didn't want to put it on there. There's also a resolution that was almost in the last meeting that was canceled's packet, and almost, actually, I don't know if it was almost in this one, but it was definitely almost in the meeting that was going to be on the sixteenth, that had councilman Bimano, councilwoman Nichols, and councilman Williams as the sponsors of it, and none of the three of us wanted to sponsor it. Again, our names are just being put on resolutions by the law department without our consent to put our names on there, and I sat in the clerk's office when I was arguing about taking my name off of that, and was being told that I can't get my name off it because it's due to the law department. Then they got on the phone and called the, called the, the city attorney who was not in the building at the time, and, and he, he said that it was okay for councilman Bimano's name to be on it, when later on, councilman Bimano said, no, I didn't want my name on it. That resolution was pulled, didn't make that meeting because obviously that meeting was canceled, and it didn't make this meeting because it has no sponsor at all. So, there's, if people are doing things the right way and checking with us, if my name is on or it says entire council, then I should know what's in that resolution before I get it in a, in a resolution packet. So, this doesn't exclude anybody. To me, in my mind, the, the intent of this resolution is to make things more transparent so there's more discussion, so that people just aren't sitting in an office that are, directors and, and heads of departments, just throwing names on a resolution. I will say, Randy Woodbury, Department of Public Works, contacts me the whole time that I've been on this council as, as a DPW committee person, as chair, and he's contacted everyone that's been on the, on the DPW committee, except for this year, he does not contact councilman Vandenhuber about being a sponsor, because if people don't know, the councilman at large can't technically sponsor a resolution. So, he contacts councilwoman Nichols and I about resolutions for the DPW, and I thank Randy for that. I'm not on some of the other committees, but I do believe that Chief Ordolano also seeks support and sponsors for his, his resolutions that he needs to put in regarding the, the safety part of it, and, and councilman Stoyl is the, the chair there. So, there's two out of all the department heads that we have, actually, I shouldn't say that, because Marsha Beach also reaches out to the finance committee members at our meeting before she's going to put in. So, we're the ones, we're the ones that are putting our names to this, and a lot of times it's just, like I said, entire council and everybody's on there. So, this is a big pet peeve of mine, and this does encourage conversation amongst, like it says right in there. It, it is to stop the blanket use and improve communications between the departments, resolution drafters, and council, period. There's no hidden, hidden agenda. So, I think anybody fighting on a hidden agenda must have the hidden agenda themselves, and that's all I have to say about it.
Any other discussion? Councilman Bimano?
I totally understand part of the reason why council, majority, councilman Williams is saying about transparency and not getting back to us. My feeling on that is, we should go after the people, or person, or what department it is, and hammer them for not doing that, instead of going and making a charter change over this, which we've had this in our, in our charter for years and years and years. So, one person may want to, and I'm going to use myself an example, I'm usually the odd man out up here, and if I wanted to sponsor one, whether they say, it would put their name to it or not, I'm just using this as an example. If I wanted to sponsor a resolution, I would have to have two, and they could possibly hypothetically say no, and our right as a council person, as a legislative body of the city, we should be able to sponsor anything we want, that's what a part of our job is, and that's why I'm, I'm voting no to this. I think we should go another direction and go after the people, or person, or departments, and we should hammer the heck out of them in public, or however we have to do it, in these situations that we are here, to go after them and rectify the problem.
Yeah, I've tried that, but yeah, sorry.
I just want to add to that, what Marty said. If you firmly believe that a resolution should be up for council, then I would try that my hardest to talk with your other council members to make sure and for them to understand why it's so important.
I understand where you're coming from, but I'm talking about the future council people.
That's what I, I'm still saying the same thing.
We can do, we don't know that, we don't know who's going to be here and what--
It doesn't make any difference.
Changing a charter--
You're not listening, Marty. I said, if you, if any council member firmly believes in a resolution, they should talk and have correspondence with the other council members so that they understand where they're coming from, and it would be an important resolution that would be passed by the entire council.
Anybody else? We're going to vote on the amended resolution. Call the roll.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Bimanto.
No.
Councilmember Stoyl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember Elijah Vandenhuber.
Aye.
Number forty-six, which is pulled. One to forty-nine.
Forty-nine, resolution for intro number four to local law number four dash twenty-twenty, City of Dunkirk, a local law to amend Chapter twenty-five, dog, Section twenty-five dash six, E, penalties for offenses.
Need a motion to take off the table?
Take it off the table.
Second. By councilman Stoyl, seconded by councilman Williams, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Bimanto.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember at large Vandenhuber.
Aye.
Uh, now we're going to vote on the amended resolution, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Bimanto.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember at large Vandenhuber.
Aye.
Prefiled resolutions.
Number fifty, resolution authorizing adapt the garden program.
Any discussion, counsel?
These guys do a fine job and make a motion that, that we, go ahead, I'm okay with this.
No, we don't need a motion, we'll just--
We'll vote on it.
Okay, yep. Call the roll.
Let's move it.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Bimanto.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember Elijah Vandenhuber.
Aye.
Fifty-one.
Resolution for ratification of E authorization to execute general indemnity agreement with the heart perk to, for purchase and sale of streetlight assets from National Grid as part of Dunkirk LED conversion, excuse me, conversion project with LED Energy USA.
Any discussion, counsel? This has been a hot topic for, since I've been in, out, us, us recording, according the, some of the polls from National Grid, I just want the mayor and Richard to comment on this if you could, please.
So, this is part of the process to complete the purchase of our lights. Currently, the LED project is on hold until this piece is completed. Uh, this was something that National Grid put in at the tail end, but I can let the city attorney explain a little further and get more into detail, but this is nothing more than, again, one of their requirements to complete the closing for us to purchase those lights, and then the project can continue. Richard.
Issue is, we're, we're getting ready to close on the purchase, and one of the conditions is to have a performance bond for the disconnect, disconnecting those particular poles from National Grid system, and this is just part of that process. Performance bond has already been issued, and we're just waiting for National Grid to complete their end of it and schedule closing.
Let's go.
I might take your TVs on since you joined, we're getting a lot of feedback.
Um, Richard, is this a good, is this a good thing for the city of Dunkirk?
Can you hear me?
You're telling, since the TV's on, we're getting feedback.
Okay, uh, yes, it is. This is part of finishing a project that will save the city--
Because they're getting feedbacks.
Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in operating costs, converting over to LED lighting. All the city facilities have been done, so this is the second piece, which is the streetlight.
You, um, would you like to comment on that also, just, just for the taxpayers of the city of Dunkirk, because it's a good thing down the road, I mean, use that for, for the younger generation?
Was that for me?
Mayor. Yes. Yeah.
Yes, I'm having difficulty hearing you, just so you know, but, uh, yes, this is a great thing for the city taxpayers, probably one of the best projects when we came into doing this project, the state supported it and has given us one point one million dollars to complete the purchase of these lights. This project is being used as a model across the state for other municipalities to do the same thing. When this is complete, the city taxpayers will begin to save approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year moving forward. So, this is a major accomplishment for our city, and we were one of the first municipalities, I might add, to do this in New York State.
Thank you. Any other discussion, counsel? Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Bimanto.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember Elijah Vandenhuber.
Aye.
Carry fifty-two.
Resolution setting price and policy for vendors up for city festivals.
Any discussion, counsel?
Just, I, I think that the resolution speaks for itself, that's all. Uh, it sets things at a fair rate and has people pay right here at City Hall.
Sounds good. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Bimanto.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember Elijah Vandenhuber.
Aye.
Fifty-three.
Resolution rescinding council resolution number ninety-six dash twenty seventeen, creation of human resources director position.
Any discussion, counsel? Marty?
I think we, we should keep the human resources director, as I spoke about forty-five minutes ago about this, and, for all the reasons I said, a lot of compliance, and back in twenty sixteen, we, the council voted this five-zero, I believe, to bring this person in, position. It's not about the person, it's about the position, and where the city's going forward, we, we're, we're setting ourselves up for some, um, law issues that we couldn't happen down the road, we're keeping our employees in compliance, we're keeping our, uh, all the safety, safety, uh, issues that we have that comes through human resources, not to mention contract negotiations, not to mention, uh, contract, you got to know the contract before you go into negotiations, and we have four unions, over two hundred and some employees, they all got to get tested, even our seasonal people have to get tested and go get tested and then go through that process. It, it, it's a lot to do, I mean, like I said before, I work at ECR and we have fifty-eight union people and some salary people, and we have a permanent H R, since the day I walked in there twenty-six years ago.
I was just looking at the resolution on eleven, six seventeen, it was a cast a vote of three-two.
Was it?
Councilman Chicago, councilwoman Chicago, and councilman Elijah Wallace, and voted no on it.
It was--
I'm sorry.
That's right.
It was controversial back then, I guess, but it still passed at that time.
Anybody else?
It's just this, the position can be recreated, it's not never going to be, happen again. When the right situation appears, then the, the position of human resource will be recreated.
We have an opportunity to work with the schools now, we can share that possibly.
Correct, so it's not a dead, I mean, it's--
Correct, correct, but, um--
Mr. Chairman.
This, this, uh, councilman Bimano and I were on, on council when, when we voted this in, I actually voted for it back in two thousand seventeen, and, um, in, in this essence, uh, this, this title was created by a simple council resolution. It, it needed a, it needed a public hearing, it needed to be tabled, have a public hearing, and then we took it and we passed it, passed three to two. So, what we're doing here is, there's a resolution to rescind that resolution, and if we need to in the future, if we hear that there's some collaboration with the school district or any other municipality or anything for human resource officer, director, um, then, then we can always put this back into the, into the charter under the same simple resolution that we did back in two thousand seventeen.
Mr. Chairman.
May I ask you, was there a referendum when you put this in?
No, there was no referendum when we put it in, in two thousand seventeen.
I keep hearing that, shoved down our throats.
Any other discussion, counsel?
Mr. Chairman, this is the mayor, may I speak?
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Bimanto.
No.
Councilmember Stoyl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Yes.
Councilmember Elijah Vandenhuber.
Aye.
Moving on.
Number fifty-four, resolution for intro number five to local law number five dash twenty-twenty, City of Dunkirk, a local law to amend city, excuse me, city charter and code, abolish H R director from Article two, Section two point zero three, Article fifteen, Section fifteen of city charter, and Chapter two, Article two, and fifteen of the city code.
Any discussion, counsel?
Yes, um, I, I would like to say as, as one of the sponsors, because we were told that it was needed at one time, and since we've had further discussion with some of our, our counsel for this whole case, um, I would like to just consider just pulling this completely and not even voting on it. If that's okay with the other sponsors of it, uh, councilwoman Nichols and councilman Stoyl, if you're all in agreement, we would just pull this, we don't, no vote on it at all.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, this is--
You just want to pull this resolution?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, may I speak? This is the mayor. Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we're pulling this res--
Mr. Chairman, can, can you hear me?
Resolution will be renumbered.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, yeah, go ahead, Marty.
I think the mayor's trying to say something, he's muted.
I tried, but then it, feedbacked.
Hello, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me, please?
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, this is the mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
I just want to remind you, uh, by the way, I've been trying to speak throughout these past resolutions, and apparently I'm either muted or you can't hear me, either way, this system is not working well for all of our residents. Anyway, what I'd like to say is that if you look at the budget, about seventy percent of the budget is personnel costs, and this council wishes to eliminate the one position that oversees those costs for our city taxpayers. I think you are wrong, and you're doing a disservice to the city taxpayers moving forward. I am completely against it, I will be vetoing this, and I know that you'll beat the veto as you have the four votes.
Why don't we just vote on this? All right, okay. So, we're going to vote on fifty-four twenty-twenty. Clerk call the roll. No, we're not going to pull, we're going to vote on it.
Councilmember Williams.
No.
Councilmember Bimanto.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl.
No.
Councilmember Nichols.
No.
Councilmember Elijah Vandenhuber.
No.
Confuse ya.
Number fifty-five, resolution authorizing budget line modifications for fiscal year twenty-twenty.
Any discussion, counsel? Call the roll.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Bimanto.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember Elijah Vandenhuber.
Aye.
Number fifty-six, resolution accepting contract bid for Lake Shore Boulevard C wall repairs.
Uh, Richard, this is one that, uh, we amended, what was this, for the price of coming in of the bids?
That's correct, it was just amending the numbers to reflect the true numbers of bids, there was some typos.
Uh, Steve St. George was us, St. George came in as a little bid.
He was the little bid, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I got further discussion on that, uh, if anybody remembers back when, when we first took office in two thousand sixteen, um, we were sued by Mr. St. George or his enterprise or whatever, and, uh, had, had to pay like a quarter of a million dollars to them for something that happened prior to us coming, um, coming on board with the city. I just want to assure that, that everything that he bid, I did talk to Director Woodbury about this, and, uh, he said that, uh, the problem wasn't the contractor, and that the problem was actually the, the engineering firm that did it prior to, so I just want to have either, either the city attorney or, or Randy or whoever, uh, just confirm for us that, that St. George was not the ones that were the cause of, of us having to pay an extra quarter of a million dollars. to pay an extra quarter of a million dollars, uh, and that it was really just the engineering firm, not, not the, uh, not Saint George himself.
Uh, I can answer that. Uh, I was the mayor at the time we resolved this thing, uh, basically what happened is that there was a change order that was approved by the D P W at the time, director, and uh, the mayor, uh, at the time was unaware of that, but as D P W director, he acted as an agent of the city, and we had to honor that change order. So that's what happened. Fortunately, my administration was able to speak to the state, and we were able to get funding from the state to be able to pay that off. We came to a negotiation with Mr. Saint George, it was not the contractor's fault, nor was it the, the engineer's fault, it was basically the administration here in the city approving something without it going through the proper channels. We handled it, once we came into office, and councilman Williams and councilman Bermano were both here at the time, uh, we did have some executive session material that we spoke on, and I believe if you recall, the end result was that the city netted about ten thousand dollars after paying Mr. Saint George what was owed to him rightfully.
Is this contingent on the FEMA payment or the insurance payment on this?
Yes.
It's, it's correct.
On the, uh, yes, is this contingent on the payment from FEMA or the insurance that's going to pay for this?
Yes, sir.
There will not be any insurance payments on this, it will be all FEMA, and we have been working with FEMA representatives, uh, on ensuring that we are going to have some funds, we don't know exactly how much it's going to be at this point.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I just want to know, Mr. Woodbury would be down there as another set of eyes when things were happening down there when work started?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, uh, clerk color roll.
Council member Williams.
Aye.
Council member Bemanto.
Aye.
Council member Stoyl.
Aye.
Council member Nichols.
Aye.
Council member alleged Vandenberg.
Aye.
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven, resolution authorizing revitalized Dunkirk to plant trees around the city.
Any discussion? Clerk color roll.
Council member Williams.
Aye.
Council member Bemanto.
Aye.
Council member Stoyl.
Aye.
Council member Nichols.
Aye.
Council member alleged Vandenberg.
Aye.
Fifty-eight.
Resolution for the authorization of one month rent forgiveness for boardwalk lessies in the wake of the novel coronavirus business shutdown.
Any conversation? Any discussion? Seeing none, clerk color roll.
Council member Williams.
Aye.
Council member Bemanto.
Aye.